Good evening, I want to welcome everyone to this public meeting of the Oregon Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we have a presentation by Rise Up Towers about proposed cellphone towers and locations, as well as the expected improvement in cellphone service. With that, I'm going to turn it up to, turn it over to Rise Up Towers.
Thank you very much. Let me grab the mic. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody who's, who's come out tonight to show some interest in the tower project. I think it was over a year ago that I stood before the board and Rise Up Towers, which is, as you'll hear, is a second iteration. I'm going to kind of stand over here so my back's not to everybody, okay? So Rise Up Towers is a second iteration of...
Mr. Malloy, can we introduce yourself?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. My name's Mike Malloy, and I'm an attorney. Thank you very much. I'm an attorney at Obermeyer Redmond Maxwell Hippel. And I have here with me tonight Nick Pollan, who's the CEO and President of Rise Up Towers. We have Andy Peterson, and as we do more and more tower projects, there's only one name in radio frequency engineering that you rely on, and it's Andy, and we're happy to have him tonight. And then Scott Galloway from Magnus Construction. Scott's our GC, who actually knows how to build the towers and can answer technical questions. So that team is here. I am just an attorney, as I remind people again and again. So I don't know much except about the law and sort of what it would take legally, you know, to get the towers, and I'm a good talker. So I give the presentation and kind of act as the emcee for you and the board tonight. So I stood here before the board in a very empty room about a year and change ago. And Rise Up Towers, sorry, backup, Nick Pollan, in 2009 through 13, built about 13 towers. And he used a model where he built them entirely on municipal ground. And so the idea was that the taxpayers would receive a benefit and also the public service that comes from good cell tower, good cell coverage. The iPhone was the catalyst then. In 2009, Nick was smart enough to realize that towers would become more prevalent. And townships were very, very resistant, and people were very, very resistant. And so there was often a path of least resistance by putting it on the salt shed area, or the municipal depot, or the bus lot, or some other kind of out-of-the-way place that wouldn't bother the community as much and wouldn't be as in-your-face, right? Because, you know, cell towers are not pretty. We all know it. But they've become more necessary. And so a couple of years ago, Nick and I were talking on the phone. We've been friends for 25 years, that's an aside. But we were talking, and he said, you know, I think I want to do this tower thing again because COVID is becoming the catalyst for more towers. And he was right, and as we've studied it, there's going to be 50,000 to 100,000 more towers across the country. And so Rise Up started up again. We have our first tower going up where the Sesame Place water tank used to be, if anybody knows that, in Middletown Township. It's on Bucks County Water and Store Authority property, and the tower is going up actually on the 13th, so this week. We have 10 to 12 more under development locally around the area in Maryland and in New Jersey as well. So Rise Up's strategy is to pick places that are out of the way, that are not going to be as an affront to the public and to the aesthetics. And so a year ago, we came to the township because we were out pitching townships on land, and the townships would give us their properties where they thought they might want to put a cell tower. And I have to emphasize, because I think the board would appreciate it. This is the first meeting, and we're exploring this, and this is why we're doing this. We mailed 1,200 people. You guys are the ones that showed up to hear about it and on, on the screen. But the board hasn't made any decisions. I'm not taking their words out of their mouth. They've told me no decisions have been made. And they want everybody's opinion, you know, on this. So Rise Up gives 40% of the gross revenue to the township. And at the beginning, it's not that much. It's like $10,000 or $12,000 a year per carrier. T-Mobile is going to be the anchor tenant on these towers. But as Andy will tell you when he walks through the slides, the areas that these towers are covering are so bad for every carrier that we expect them to have four carriers by the end of their, you know, their lifetime. And we believe that Verizon and AT&amp;T, and Andy will confirm it, would come on sooner rather than later. The fourth carrier in the marketplace right now is Dish. It's going to be bought by somebody, Comcast or Amazon, eventually. They're just co-locating, so we have no idea whether they're interested until the towers actually go up. And that's the same with the other carriers. But we know T-Mobile is very interested in covering their gaps, and we think that others would come aboard. So on the revenue side, that means, you know, 10,000 to 12,000 a carrier to start. It has 2% to 3% escalators. And as more come on, you know, you could be making $40,000, $50,000 a year in the next few years. Nick did three towers in Middletown Township, Bucks County, 10 years ago. Those towers now have four carriers and are throwing off somewhere between $130,000 and $150,000 per tower, per year for the township. So eventually, it gets pretty lucrative. I know, you know, the township is, is fine financially, you know, they don't need it, but it can be a nice thing to add to the budget, especially over the long term. Since it's AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, you know, they're Class A tenants, you can take it to the bank, it's like an annuity. So we prepared a little presentation. Two locations where we've selected that we think are optimal to both cover the gaps that are, you know, very prominent in the township that Andy will show you through his slides. And meet the goal of just being out of the way, you know? So I'll tell you where the two are, and then we'll show you pictures. The first one that we're proposing, we initially were talking to the township about, I call it five points, but it's probably not. I live in Ambler, so I'm not sure, but I've only lived here for like 10 years, so. But the old gas station property. But, you know, Nick and I were talking, and Mimi and the staff here, who are great at the township, and we just said, that's a dog, you know? Who's going to want to see it there? So we let's, we were sitting around the table and said, maybe we could suggest a different location. And we picked the side of the Wisconsin Fire Department, right here, on the side of the township building. And it's tucked away. If we could just put up the first slides. Now, when we, when we looked at them, where are we going up here? Let's do the North Bethlehem. Let me get my notes. So could we zoom out a little bit, Jamie? So yeah, for this, this first slide, we picked, we picked three vantage points. One, sort of at the proposed location, that's number one. Can we zoom out, you think? Because you're on 200. Yeah. Yeah. Two is, which way are we going here? I wrote down the wrong order. I think I think four is Cedar Hill. No, wait, am I right? It's two Cedar Hill, two is Cedar Hill. And then that's 1,200 Cedar Hill, 110 Cleaver Road, and then 917 Pendlin Pike. You can only see it in location one, and we'll go through the slides. If you could, Jamie, just go to the next slide. So that's the existing conditions on the township building. And then if you could click, and that's the tower. Let's talk about towers. Some people might say in the room, can we do a tree? Or, you know, I'll tell you right now, T-Mobile, and we heard this yesterday, will not go on a flagpole. And what we have found is, while they are ugly, when you kind of put them in a place where, and that's the only vantage point, and we'll go through the other ones, that you can actually see it. And when you're driving up Deathland Pike, you can barely see it. But we find that the simpler, the better. You put up the stick, and it blends into the background eventually. Where the ugly Franken Tree will always loom over you, and you will always notice it as you drive by. I have seen other townships attempt to hide things. There is a marquee design. I will not show it to you because it looks great. I've seen it in person. It's just horrible. The easiest thing, simplest thing, most cost-effective, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, is to throw a tower up. Scott will tell you the equipment. I was joking with him because he's a strong guy, and he said he used to be capable to carry the equipment, and now he can't carry it because it's just gotten bigger and bigger. And you have to accommodate it. So if we could just take a look at the other views. Cedar Hill Road, and I think you can kind of see it in the background, right there. I'm going to go forward. That is Cleaver Hill, or Cleaver Road, sorry. Oh, there it is. I lied, I'm sorry. You know what? I didn't see it on my computer, but you can see it. So I'm not, I'm so sorry about that. I apologize. And then the next one, Pendlin Pike. Right in the back. Okay. So we'll save all questions and everything to the end. I'm sure people will have opinions. If you feel like you really, really can't hold yourself and want to ask me something, we're all here, and we're going to be here. So we're not, you know, as long as you need to be here. So let's talk about the second location. So Pendlin Woods Park has a like a concrete block area next to the ballfields where you store ballfield things. And there's a shed, you know, and a dirt, you know, and whatever else that you need for ballfields. And it's like a maintenance area, basically. The hot dog stand is in the middle of the park. This is away from that. This is, this is toward, so let's show location one, so we can show where we're talking about. It's okay. Well, this is the, this is the ugliest location in the park, okay? That we could find. It's a beautiful park. I run through it. It's great. I love it. You got two issues in this park. It's beautiful, it's wooded. So Rise Up is not taking down one tree. No other areas will be disturbed. The vision is that we take those concrete blocks that store the dirt, and the maintenance guys have already told us, they can get rid of them. Now, our picture is going to be a little off. We couldn't get it moved, but the, the vision is that, and if you put the, put the second one on. So the tower will go a little bit to the, to the right. Okay, kind of where the blocks are now. And we will do some sort of poured concrete, you know, thing in front for the township to use for the, for the, you know, for its facilities, you know? So it'll have the dual purposes, sort of hiding the tower a little bit, and then, you know, providing something a little more functional than the kind of crappy-looking concrete blocks that are out there. So three views. This is the second 1321 Dogwood Drive. There it is, way in the distance. You know, there's, we can go back to the area if you want, but there's not, I mean, there's a residential around the park, of course, right? But it's far from the site. You know, it's, it's distant from the site itself. Andy, how far do you think? You're our only engineer here today. Can you, can you take a spec, can you speculate for us? Okay, great. We'll see if we can come up with that answer. And if not, we'll be, you know, anything we can't do tonight, we'll answer. We'll have a Q and A section on the website, something like that, you know, to provide other answers. Do you want to, let's see. This is view three. Are we without the tower? There it is. Okay. Yep. And then number four, Truellen Avenue, 1100. Man, I don't, not physical from that, yeah. These are real. This isn't fake. These are done, you know, scientifically by our engineers who come out. I was on the site when we took all of the photos. They do calculate the height appropriately. These are actual, you know, viewpoints. We didn't cherry pick vantage points. We thought we picked the best ones that we most demonstrate the impact, if any, you know, to your, you know, wherever your geography is. So those are the pictures, and Andy, we can answer the question later. Do you have some? Okay. So this is called a, what is this called? A coverage map? Andy's going to get up here because I don't know what I'm talking about. But this is basically, like, the green is covered, and the white is not covered. And so you might see a familiar space out there that doesn't have coverage. And let's
I'll give it to Andy, and he'll tell you about it.
Hi, I'm Andrew Peterson, radio frequency engineer. Been involved in the siting and design of these facilities now for about 25 years. I've worked for all the major carriers over the past 25 years, and some carriers that don't even exist anymore. In fact, a few of those. This is all T-Mobile-specific information. As was stated, they are the anchor tenant for these facilities. We could talk a little bit about the other carriers. I can't speak for them. I can only speak to my experience with, with what happens once we have a tower constructed and how the carriers share these towers. But in any case, to get to the, to get to the coverage or lack thereof here, you're probably all pretty familiar with where the dead spots are, regardless of your provider. They're going to, they're going to be pretty similar. There are not many facilities in this area of the township. T-Mobile is on all of the existing wireless infrastructure that would serve into this area of the township. And they have quite a large gap in reliable service. So what we're, what we're showing here is a map, basically. We've got roadways. We've got the main roadways, like 202. There's Pendlin Pike, Morris Road, Bethlehem Pike, and Sumney Town Pike. Then we've got all the smaller roadways shown as well. And then on here, we also have some T-Mobile-specific information. You can see these propeller icon locations. Those are the locations of the existing T-Mobile facilities that are on the air and serving T-Mobile customers today. I think this is a tree pole up here on 202. There's some water tanks that are in use, and I have an inventory of what all these sites are and how tall they are and all that, if anyone's interested. And then beyond that, we also have some coverage information. We've got dark green coverage, which is a threshold or a signal strength that's going to serve a T-Mobile subscriber, even in a building, let's say, like this, glass-and-steel-type structure that's built with more heavy-duty materials. And then we have the second shade of green here, which is strong enough to serve an individual when they're in their home. So stick-built structure. And then we have lighter green there that's, that's going to serve you in your vehicle. And then, and then gray areas where if you're, if you happen to be out and about and just walking or running or on your bike, where you don't have the obstruction of a vehicle or a home to attenuate the signal, you'll, you'll have service. So you can see that there are large areas basically bounded by Morris Road, Plymouth Road, across Sumney Town Pike and over to Bethlehem Pike, and then Pendlin Pike, where, where there is a lack of service, strong enough even to provide for you when you're in your vehicle, which is why we all drop a lot of calls when we're driving through this area. The the, the white areas are service levels that are so poor, even if you are out and about, just walking your dog. I'd expect that you would not have T-Mobile service. So there's a clear gap in coverage here. And that's, that's what Rise Up is looking to address, and for T-Mobile, at least initially. That's, that's what the, the goal is here. So the next slide here is showing the proposed coverage. If we add just the facility that's being proposed, Pendlin Woods Park. If we can flip back and forth, maybe just once or twice. Yeah, so my, my son plays a lot of lacrosse at Pendlin Woods Park. And I'm there for other reasons as well, and, and I can say from firsthand experience that even when I'm outside watching his game, it's difficult to make calls or do anything useful with my phone. So this would go a long way in providing service between Plymouth Road and Pendlin Pike, all the way over to Morris Road, kind of addressing the southern or southwestern portion of this gap in service. Where's what road? How do you spell that? I can oh, Dager, by the high school.
It's where that circle is?
Where?
Keep going up a little right up.
Wait, okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. So, yeah, this site will go a long way to providing improved coverage in, in the areas on the southwest side of that gap. Again, this is a repeat of the first slide. I think if we go to the next slide, we can see what the other facility does, and I think that that's going to address the Dager Road area a little bit, a little bit more. And these, it's important to note that this is propagation modeling. We use propagation modeling software. It's a tool that resides on a computer. It's very intelligent. It knows where the trees are, it knows where the buildings are, it knows where the terrain is. It knows all the details of the existing T-Mobile sites. So using all that information and fine-tuning that model, over time, we're able to accurately anticipate coverage from facilities that aren't on the air and sites that are already on the air. But what happens after we construct the facility will, as we integrate it into the network, as T-Mobile integrates it into, into their network, they'll do some fine-tuning, looking to improve kind of this, this initial design with antenna orientations and down tilts and things like that. So this isn't the final design by any means, and, and of course, we're a long way from there anyway. But this gives us a really good idea as to what we can expect a site to cover. Now, this, this location is not the location that we're talking about now. It's just southwest. This is, this is the original location that Mike had mentioned, so across the intersection at the old gas station property. Because that's where it was originally proposed. This site's going to really be kind of over here, maybe where that E is. So that will move the coverage with it a tiny bit, but when we look at it from this view, you can see that the, the coverage area relative to that, that move of maybe a few hundred feet or certainly less than 1,000 feet. This is going to be kind of a, a good good, it gives us a good idea where can, we can expect that coverage. So I do, I do recognize that this is not the final or, or not the location that we are currently at, but this still gives us a great idea of what we can expect. So if we can then head to the last slide, we have both of the facilities on the air, I think. Is there one more set? There we go. Yeah, so this is the improve, the coverage improvement now. If, if we have both the facilities on the air activated, the antenna center lines are at 150 feet in both cases. That's the, that's the current wish of T-Mobile to have that center line, which leaves some room below for additional carriers. And it's been my experience over the years that, once the pole is in the air, the carriers that are looking to add service and knowing, knowing what I know about the coverage in the area, the other major carriers are going to want to add service here. It's been my experience that, whether it's the next budget cycle or the budget cycle after that, they will co-locate. Co-location is, is really easy for the carriers. When, when they own the pole, let's say Verizon owns it, and T-Mobile wants to go on, they all have master lease agreements. In a case like this, for Rise Up, we'll, we'll have ownership of the pole. They're looking, they're actively looking for tenants, so they make it very easy, and that process is easy. There's not a whole lot of there's really not the construction or the permitting process the way there is for a new tower, so it's, so it's a quick process. And I'd fully expect that over the next few years, I couldn't say when or how or which carrier would go on which pole when, and then things like that, but I would anticipate that they'd be interested in co-locating on both of these poles at some point.
So if you have Verizon, let's say, and these poles go up, and it's just T-Mobile for a cycle, two cycles, however many cycles, the person who has Verizon is not going to notice any difference, right?
That's right. They won't have any detriment to their service. There's no interference that would hurt their service. They, but, but they, they also won't have an improvement until, until Verizon or AT&amp;T or Dish Network, whoever, they, they actually have to install their equipment. The, the providers do share tower infrastructure, but they don't share antennas and equipment. So they, they do need to install their own. That's really it when it comes to the, the coverage discussion. Happy to, I'll, I'll be around, so if there's questions that come up as we go, happy to entertain them.
Does anyone have any questions for Andy now, before he sits down? Yeah, sure.
That's a good question. Well, when, when you look around at sites, and I don't know is, is the short answer, but when you look at sites, you'll notice that they're, that they look, initially, they'll look like the, the sites that we're looking at there, and then you'll see that there'll, there'll be additional racks of antennas. And I'd say, when you look around, there's usually two, three racks of antennas on, on a site. Occasionally, you'll see single-carrier poles around there, but I'd, I'd say that's more the exception. So there's usually, there's a lot of co-location that goes on in the, in the industry. We, we like to use existing tall structures. They're much cheaper, they're much faster to market. So once, once there's some steel in the air, we like to co-locate on them.
Does, does competition between the carriers drive?
Certain. So if Verizon knows that half the room doesn't have Verizon, obviously, they're going to be more apt to, you know, co-locate faster, do you think?
Right, sure. But in your experience, in your general experience, Right, sure, but in your experience, in your general experience.
Just sends out a lot of mailers.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, what's the mechanism by which sort of? Residents with if this were to go up and it would be solely T-Mobile. Is there a mechanism by which residents or is it Rise Up or who's sort of working with these other carriers to bring them onboard?
Well, I mean, Rise Up that's gonna, you know, own the tower, I mean, is. Intrinsically motivated to get more carriers on there, right? Both for you, that's what makes it kind of a really good public private partnership, you know, when when we gain, you gain and. You know, so we Verizon's the carrier on the first pole. Rise Up has bi-weekly calls with the Verizon reps in the area. AT&amp;T, we're in touch with their people and with Dish. So as soon as our. It's gonna get to the set last part of my presentation. The more definitive that tower is, the more likely you can motivate a carrier faster. So if we say, hold on, I'm sorry. Grab my phone because I have a little list on. If we say to the township. You know, is there a path to this, a clear path? Or entitlements and approval? And that tower becomes real. You know, Rise Up. Can have the tower up in three to five months, three to six months. If the more layered. An approval process is, the less confident and the less. Quickly you can get a carrier motivated to come. So I mean, I'll let Nick speak to it, but I think I recall in conversations with Verizon. And AT&amp;T that it was, well, let us know when the tower's going up. You know, and Dish is 100% that way. Because they are only co-locating, and I haven't heard of I haven't heard of one, Andy may or Nick may know better, but. So it sort of brings me to the last part of my presentation, and this is to the board. The board knows. That a zoning change is required for these towers. I I know that you're not influenced. And by other townships because the leadership here is impeccable, folks. Your township leadership is incredible. But I will say Montgomery Township, Witpane Township, White Marsh Township, Roerstford Borough, Warrister Township. Limerick Township in Lower Southford, and that's just the ones I could find today. All exempt themselves from zoning. And. As the leaders of the the community, if you decide that you want to cover an area on township ground. You're the landlord, you know, you can ask Rise Up and we can negotiate, you know, whatever. We need to negotiate. And that will greatly improve. The entitlement process. There are federal permits that need to be need to happen. There are local building permits that need to happen. The law says that cell towers are exempt from land development, they don't count as land development because there's no traffic or real impact. So we don't really have to go through that, we'd look obviously at stormwater management and grading and things like that, but. You know, the bottom line ask from Rise Up here. Is if you're so inclined to bring towers into the township and you want to do it as fast as possible. Make it a buy rate process and put yourselves in charge of it. And when you sign the lease, we'll be off to the races. We, by the way, you don't pay a dime, the town, this is at no cost to the township. To give you an idea, though, the capital outlay for Rise Up. And what justifies the 60% of the rent is about $250,000 to $300,000, $350,000. Out of pocket at the beginning to build the tower, pay Scott, Andy, et cetera. That doesn't mean that we're gonna be in a run and rough shot over here. So if the ordinance has standards, which obviously it should. Rise Up would demonstrate to the board that it met those standards, you know, prior to lease or or whatever. I just, you know, I think we've we've notified people, I I really do want to hear what people have to say. But we sent out a lot of notice, we're getting a lot of attention. I've personally heard a lot of positive feedback from just a handful of people. But we'd ask, you know, the bottom line asks is that we, if we decide to go forward. It's your land, you're a landlord, streamline the process and let us put two towers up and get this coverage done. And again, three to five, six months. If we can streamline. From start to finish. I love talking, that's all I got, though, so.
So we're gonna open it up to public comment. I don't know who has that, you have the microphone, I guess.
Before before the comments go, I'm sure that folks have a lot of questions. I can tell you, we all know that there's a problem with cellphone coverage in this township. You don't have to, you don't have to, you're absolutely welcome, we'll stay all night to hear stories. About cellphone coverage problems, but I'm telling, we all, we know that, we acknowledge that, we're not, you you, no one. Here or online has to convince us that we have an issue. So let's start from that proposition and then by all means, tell your stories and ask your questions.
Just have to come up, state your name, and if you could say your address for the record. I don't know if Mr. Malloy, if you want to help pass out the microphones, so people don't have to come up? Or you can come on up?
Hi, my name is Deb Watson, 1051 Shifting Hill Road. How long are the leases? And if these two towers go up, does that mean we're not having like 5G service on phone poles down our street?
So Andy's better to answer the second part of that question, but my understanding of the situation is that. The carriers are opting now for larger facilities and regular towers. Because the 5G kind of stinks, the 5G little poles, it's not giving them as good. Coverage and it's just not as effective. Rolling out the little things on the on the, you know, light posts and stuff in the right of way. It also doesn't make the township any money, by the way, they get nothing for them to occupy these the right of way.
Could the questions be repeated for those of us on Zoom?
Sure, the 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 first, the first question was was two part, it was first. How long are the leases? And that answer is the lease, the ground lease with the township, we asked for a 29 year lease. Five year initial term with. Three five year renewals and one four, if my math, is my math right? Five four year and five four, 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 five year renewals and one. Four year. The lease with the carrier will be. Probably almost the same, but 25 years for for sure. The carriers are all also making a significant investment. Their capital outlay is is quite significant to put these antennas up, and so. You know, they like to know that they're gonna be there for a while and it's gonna be effective. The second, you said a radiation question though, too, right?
When when you have the 5G on all those poles, you have that much more radiation.
I have no idea.
So I just was wondering, by putting the towers up, does that mean they're then not inclined to go? Put stuff all down the streets by our homes?
Let's that that the quick answer to that, and can every can the audience hear that? I guess 5G on small. Mini installations versus a large one, the quick answer is yes. That will. You know, they won't have to do the 5G installation. From a radiation standpoint, though, I don't know, you know, and Andy can answer, oh, there's, he's right here.
Looking for you back there.
Oh, sure, yeah, so. Again, I can't speak for the carries, in fact, on that point, I can't even speak for T-Mobile, don't have a crystal ball. However, what I can tell you is. The small cells, we call them. That traditionally go in the right of way on wood poles and other type of traffic type structures, things like that. They're great in dense urban and urban environments where the homes are close to the right of way. They don't work as well and they really don't work well at all when it comes to getting into homes and. And really providing in-building coverage in an area like this where we have larger properties away from the right of way. So. The way things are now, I wouldn't expect that to to come along. Particularly if these two towers are are constructed. But I can't say that there'll never be any small cells along this corridor, I just don't know that answer, and we do have a shopping center kind of. Proximate here, and they do work well in shopping centers, shopping center parking lots, they're used somewhat frequently, so. Can't say they'd never be here, but. You know, I I just don't see it the way things stand now. Yeah, the the with these on the air, there would. There would be less of a need for those, I guess, is is the answer, but I can't say they never would. And on the emissions and exposure. Small cells, large sites, macro sites like we call these, they all have to be vetted for the for electromagnetic emission safety. So yes, small cells are closer to us, they're in the right of way. Sometimes, you know, in urban areas, we could have homes that are very close to the right of way. And I do a lot of that type of work where I examine those for the carriers and they're all vetted. They are closer, but they're also much lower in power. So that kind of offsets the proximity. And the carriers, they value their licenses above everything else, it's the most valuable asset that the providers have. So they would never put their licenses in jeopardy by installing something knowingly. That exceeds FCC guidelines for for human exposure, so. If if that answers the second part of the question.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question on the radiation of the towers. And the proximity to the radiation frequency. I mean, how close does a home have to be to that tower to have radiation or health issues for anybody in the neighborhood?
So the reality is with these types of facilities. When exposure becomes an issue, it's for folks that are working on these facilities. And that is common, or I shouldn't say only working on these, so working on. Structures where these facilities are housed, so that's a common occurrence. In again, more urban or dense urban areas where we use a lot of rooftops. If if you're, next time you're in Philly, look up at the rooftops and you'll see cellular antennas all over the place. And there's also folks that are up there, maybe they have rooftop deck, maybe they have. By virtue of their employment, they they are close to HVAC equipment on a rooftop or they're working on the roof itself. So for those types of instances, we're required by the FCC to. Add signage, add barriers, give folks ample warning, even folks that find themselves up there as a consequence of their employment. There are separate guidelines because those folks are trained on how to behave around antennas and antenna sites. So there's a less stringent guideline for for those folks, they sometimes wear monitors, but. This is a long way of saying those are really the only instances where we're going to find levels that exceed FCC guidelines. And that's just proximity, when we're within. 10, 15, 20 feet of the front of these antennas. There is potential for electromagnetic emissions. And exposure that can exceed guidelines beyond that. The power falls off so quickly. That we're below FCC guidelines when we're just, you know, 50, 60 feet away and and much less in in reality. And again, each and every facility that's installed by these carriers is vetted from that perspective. Right, so what's proposed here are antennas that are 150 feet in the air. When we survey these types of facilities and I have, I've surveyed dozens, probably 100 over the years. Rooftops and poles like this where the antennas are elevated. Typical readings around the base of a pole like this are going to be on the order of 1,000 times below FCC guidelines. So lots of margin as far as safety goes for for a facility like this.
I have to go ahead to both of you, man, you have a lot of ideas. And things happen to people and you standing up here tonight saying what you have to say, but you don't live in the area. And you're giving quotes that you think, now if you stand up and you do it, will you be safe? They do a lot of things in the United States they shouldn't do, and then people come in with lawyers and different people like that. And the people die, when people die, they don't give people anything. Period. I'm saying, y'all want to do something in the area that's been here forever, all of a sudden. Now the phones have came out, now you have grid ideas, you want to do this. Next thing you know, that the people we have to pay for, this stuff is not free. It's like you're coming here and making conversation to all of us? You don't live here, so you're saying something to the people. Are you gonna help the people in a way, nothing's free, if you go to a store and you buy food, you have to pay for it. This is not free, and the people really believe what you're saying, I don't believe it. I completely do not believe it.
It's not free.
No, but why you want to make more tax money for people?
Well, the way that it works, right? Is that, okay. Rise Up leases ground, 2,500 square feet.
Rick, you should have done that a long time ago, now you're coming into something that you're asking for now. It should have been done a long time ago, if you're gonna do it, now you want to do something and you want to make money and profit off the people. And the people are sitting here believing everything you said, and when the people get sick and their families die from all this stuff. There's no lawyer, there's nobody to help. Period, if they made all these phones all this time, all those years. They should have had everything set up, not wait all these years now. They sold their little cell phones and stuff, and they got the bigger phone, and some of them are in money markets too, that's all it is. For the little phones, the big phones, and you two folks are standing up and telling people they're gonna do something, they just play a little bit of nothing. If they don't pay their taxes, they won't stay in their homes. The same thing you said, you have a job to do and the rest of you can have jobs to do. Be careful what you say to people if it's not true. It sounds good because the conversation has been thought, but people live every day, they're struggling. Go and help the people that don't have something. If they don't want a cell phone, they don't want a cell phone, some people want cell phones. If you're gonna do that, and their phones are gonna be shit and blood, and now you're coming this area and that area, make something different? I don't see.
Anybody else?
So I'm Rob Middleburg, I'm at Two Richard's Way, so I sat on the Board of Directors for a private school. In Meadowbrook. And they put up a cell tower on the school campus. And I'm a I'm a toxicologist by trade and I was tasked with assessing whether it posed a safety risk to children. And it does not. I researched it, I'm familiar with the subject matter as a toxicologist and. It is true that the towers are so high that by the times. Any electromagnetic radiation comes down, it's dissipated, it can't, it won't reach the ground. So if anything, there would be a concern, as a toxicologist, you always err on the side of caution, that's what you do. That's your job. And of course, you always try to prove what we call the null hypothesis that people would get hurt. And I saw no evidence of that. To the point that we left it on the ground of a school with elementary school children. So I wasn't concerned then, and I'm not concerned now, and I do live in the township. Oh, boy, how many years ago was that installed? I would say. Probably 20 years ago, and that's before things improved even. No. My children went there. My children went there and we have no health concerns with our children.
My name is Sharon, I live at 1147 Truwelling Avenue, so if you're talking about putting something on Truwelling Avenue in between, which is not big. For the homes that are there, then you're talking about putting it out in the park, which you're still talking about in the homes in the area. I'm concerned because my thing is, I guarantee, I I understand that we all use our phones. And I'm trying to figure out who's our carrier that we have now? Or do we have towers now that actually works for our phones? And to bring in new towers, is that something? Because we need it or is that something because we need to upgrade, as they say, if it ain't broke, why fix it? My concern is. Is this something that we really do need, as far as I understand, people have dropped phone calls, that's normal, so you're talking about T-Mobile. Hey, I got T- Hey, I got T-Mobile. I mean, every phone, no matter where you go, whether you go outside the city, in the city, in the county or anywhere else, eventually one way, whether you go in the elevator or not, it depends on whatever your phone or whatever might drop, might not drop. My biggest concern was do we need the towers? Is that something that we really need in this area? So close to homes, well, that's so even though I know you said there's other towers like near the markets and stuff like that. Those are towers, but at the same time, they're just bands of strips or whatever they put on, just like little TV antennas. We're not talking about a big, big tower. You're saying 150 feet.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Right. So I mean, that's my concern. I need to do more researching on it. I need to understand it a little more. I mean, everything like the young lady said prior before, everything sound great, but is it really great? That's my biggest concern. We'll live here for years to come and we'd never see anything, no matter how many years, we might not see it till later. So that's my concern.
Well, I, I, look, I, I can tell you a few things, right? First, if T-Mobile occupies the towers, um, the township will receive 40% of the revenue, the gross revenue for the tower. It's, it's, well, I'm just telling you the facts, right? So there is something, right? Second, second, as we said, sorry. That's what Andy was saying earlier, is that as you drive around and, and notice it, you know, do your own, right? Kind of informal survey as you drive around and I'm always looking at towers now because I, you know, I do a lot of, right? They all have two, they all have three. Drive along the turnpike, they have four. You know, some along 76, I don't know what, who they have. They've got eight, you know, I don't know where, where else they're getting them from. So yeah, the, the area is, is underserved. And if we can put a tower up for T-Mobile, you know, as Andy mentioned, the other two potentially Dish, you know, will want to occupy it. They want to be competitive with each other. They don't want T-Mobile to have great coverage through Penland Blue Bell Pike and have Verizon not have the same coverage. It doesn't behoove them to, to do that. They're extremely competitive. And once somebody builds a tower, it is more than likely that within a certain period of time, probably 36 months, you know, probably the next two or three years, you're going to have, uh, the other carriers occupying the tower. It could be faster though. It could be faster because the gaps that we're showing for T-Mobile are, you know, and T-Mobile generates these, not Andy, you know? Um, so we rely on, on their stuff, but if Verizon gave us propagation studies, they'd be pretty similar, we think. And so, and AT&amp;T too. So yeah, the towers will attract the other carriers. They will. They, they will. What's that? Yes. So, so the, the question is, will, will the tower be able to be occupied by the other carriers? And the answer is absolutely. Uh, that's why we build it at 150. We think others could go lower. You know, one of the things is I see a lot, co-location can be just done through a building permit. You make it faster, easier for them. Assuming the township, you know, has review costs and things like that covered, right? But yeah, it'll make it very attractive to them. And Rise Up absolutely wants them for the township and, and itself.
My name is Michael Vander Swann. I live at Six Richards Way. It was about nine months or so ago that I came before this board and I handed in 106 petitions. And I appreciate all of your effort to get us from where we were then to where we are tonight. When I got the word from Mimi that, um, this meeting was going to take place, I followed up with virtually all of the 106 people. And they were all very excited about and optimistic about the progress. So, uh, you mentioned, Michael, you don't have to hear again about the great need. It really exists. During the course of our investigation and our, our, uh, our, our fight to get better coverage, Sharon sent a complaint to the Federal Communication Commission. They sent it to Verizon and Verizon followed up four weeks later and they said, we are, we apologize, but you live in a dead zone. The pictures that you presented substantiate that claim. So all of us that are here representing those signatures, we firmly, uh, we, we encourage you to move forward as quickly as possible and put up the towers. There are no cell connections now. We can't make a phone call. The police drive by and they drop the call. And to your point, there are no towers in our area to, to have the signal. They're not there. And to the concern about the people who live nearby towers, tens of millions of people in America, hundreds of millions, if not a billion people around the world, live in proximity of towers. I would be about, well, how, uh, how far would it be?
About 500 feet away.
500 feet?
600 feet away.
The one proposed here will be closer to my house. Closer than.
I think there's more concern using an electric toothbrush every morning, quite frankly.
Couple of.
I want to add one thing. I had a life or death emergency and could not use my phone. I dropped the mic on that.
Yeah, I was, I was just about to say, I mean, the park particularly, you got a wonderful wooded walking trail back there. And you want 911 service. You want 911 service around your parks. You want it around the area. You want it in the neighborhoods. Rise Up also will install, you know, this is just something they do. This is not to sweeten the pot for you guys, but they'll install any of your emergency management, 911 antennas, whatever else you want to put on free of charge, rent free, you know? And Scott Galloway back there will make sure it's installed properly. Um, you just bring us your equipment and we'll work with your folks and make sure you have whatever you need up there by way of emergency management too.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. I thought the audience was finished. Um, just out of curiosity, why is 150 feet optimal for the height of the towers?
It's where, uh, T-Mobile wanted to be. It's what their RAD center is and Andy can tell you what a RAD center is, but that's the height that they wanted to achieve the coverage that we're showing today. They can vary in height. It's, it's, it's technically, you know, dependent upon, the height that the cat, certain carrier wants to be. And then other carriers will settle for a lower height. But Andy, why don't you?
Why does, why does T-Mobile want to be at 100?
Can't answer definitively. That, that's what they're proposing here. So for some technical reason, maybe that's what they needed to, to achieve the, the coverage footprint that, that they're, uh, seeking here. Tower, it's kind of like basketball. You can't teach height when it comes to towers, um, and antenna height because the, the higher you are, the, the better the line of sight to the surrounding area. So you may say, why not build everything to 250 feet and cover the whole area? Well, there, there's a balancing act there. We don't, we don't want to have overly redundant coverage where we have two sites, uh, for back, uh, lack of better terms, like fighting over subscribers. We want each site to have, uh, uh, as well-defined, um, coverage footprint as we can. But we also need a little overlap. That way, when you drive through, uh, through, through the landscape, you can be handed off by the network from one site to the next, enabling the mobility aspects of the network without dropping calls. So there's that balancing act that the, the radio frequency design engineers, um, use the software that we looked at earlier to determine what's the Goldilocks just right height for the site at Penland Woods? What's it going to be, you know, at the township? In this case, they just both so happen to be 150 feet. T-Mobile seems to like 150 feet, um, in these two cases. It, it's a common, a, a common design height in an area like this. It's not just T-Mobile. It gives us enough coverage, uh, enough line of sight over the tree canopy, which can be significant. Um, in an area like this, the tree canopy may be 60, 70, sometimes 80 feet in height. We want to have a good line of sight up and over that so we can see, uh, down below, um, the, the tree canopy. And then there's, there's significant terrain in the area. You may not think of this as, as a hilly or a terrain, uh, riddled area. It's, it's certainly not the Poconos, but, um, that, that also plays a factor.
Are the, um, the towers that have been erected in the surrounding townships that you called out earlier, are they 150 feet tall also?
I, I would imagine a lot of them are. I build a lot of towers or I shouldn't say I build them. I'm involved in the sighting and construction and of a lot of new towers. And I'd say that's an average height these days. It, it used to be probably 180, 190. We like to keep them below 200 because anything above 200 has to be FAA lit, um, regardless of its proximity to an airport. Um, so we always like to keep them below 200, uh, but the average probably used to be 180 if we go back 10, 15 years. As these networks matured, we want, we intentionally want each site to cover a little less area. We like to control that signal a little bit more. But that's, that's about the, the average height these days. Yes, ma'am.
And if other carriers decide to, um, join these towers, they'll be below those that, that 150 feet. And how far below the 150 feet will they be? And does every, does every provider need to provide an antenna that goes even lower?
So just to repeat the question, um, if T-Mobile is at 150 feet, how much lower will the next carrier be? And does each provider need to keep going lower and lower? I think that to paraphrase the question, um, traditionally the carriers are installed 10 feet apart. For a lot of reasons, uh, but these, the, the monopoles are usually installed with pre-cut portholes every 10 feet. That way, when the next carrier comes along, um, it's an easy installation process to get their, the, the cabling that, that goes up to the antenna, goes inside the monopole. That way we don't see the unsightly, you know, unsightly look of, of cables on the, on the outside. Um, then it pops out, um, 10 feet below, and that's where the next rack of antennas would be. Um, and then 10 feet increments below. So in a case like this, maybe, uh, the next two carriers are at 140 and 130. And then maybe Dish would be on at 120. Um, so those are really the only four players in the marketplace right now. So even if there were some municipal whip antennas or some other, um, equipment that went up, maybe they would be below that. But nothing that would be, you know, below 100 feet, I wouldn't think, um, in the foreseeable future on a site like this.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Jones. Uh, I live at 802 Creekview Drive. Just a couple of comments, uh, that I think are relevant. Number one, things have changed dramatically through the years. And one of the things that's changed significantly has been the change from landlines to cell. And, uh, we live in a beautiful community, a lot of trees, but one of our most frequent visitors is Pico. Cause the lines go down constantly and with that, so goes our cell service. That is in fact the cell server or, um, that is through the internet and so forth. Comcast is down regularly during those periods of time. So as to the need, I think this is the future. We need this. We need this for the community. We need it across the United States. And quite frankly, we've lived with power lines and telephone lines around our streets, which bring those emissions to us on a daily basis at a much closer range than, than a tower, which is 150 feet tall. So, uh, again, I think the concerns are, uh, you know, there may be something in the future that we all find out and that's something that, you know, we are going to have to do, but I don't think it's going to be any worse than what we've lived with, certainly for all these years with power lines and things that are right here. So again, uh, as far as that's concerned, we would certainly support it. Uh, even in this week, this past weekend, we had a tree blow over at the Septa Station and take out the power. And we were without power for two days and we were also without communications. I have T-Mobile and I basically had little to no coverage. So again, I know you know that there's no coverage in a lot of the township, but I just wanted to certainly let you know some of my thoughts with regards to that. And I respect obviously the concerns that you have and I also have, uh, going forward. But again, uh, if you look at, you know, what the power industry has done and where they run their lines and when they on the streets every day, there's a much greater risk on a daily basis, I would think than that. And I am not associated with these folks, but I am a resident and I am, I do have some concerns. So, um, one last question. I, I know that you've got T-Mobile as your anchor. But obviously not all of us have T-Mobile. I do. My wife doesn't. So there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not there's actually a concern, obviously that some of the folks wouldn't have coverage. And would Rise Up Tower offer all of the competitors, okay, upfront, the same price structure that you offer your anchor to make it competitive for those folks to in fact, uh, be part of the cell coverage so that they don't have to come back in and ask these folks for yet another tower somewhere else?
Right, right, right. Okay. So, uh, it's, it's funny. So, you know, uh, there are publicly traded tower companies out there that own thousands and thousands and thousands of towers across the country and the world. And when you ask the Verizon and T-Mobile people, um, who they'd rather deal with, it's a hundred percent Rise Up Towers, okay? The smaller tower companies can dominate, um, the area, uh, because the goal is to lease up the tower. And we have, you know, as the township's potential partner, I mean, we have a responsibility not to give the store away, right? But we, we just don't make it difficult for them to lease from us. Um, we don't whack them with weird fees and upgrade charges and stuff like that, but maybe they should, you know? But the goal is to make it, the tower process sort of easiest for the township, easy for the carriers, you know, and really eventually easy for Rise Up because it's just a, a smoother negotiation process. So, you know, rents are somewhere between 2250 and, you know, maybe 3,000. This is a great area. So I, I don't know what the rents will be, you know, for this. But, you know, they're within that range and they really haven't moved very much in the past, you know, couple of decades either. So, you know, we just don't make it difficult, you know, for them. So the, the short answer is yes. Every day of the week, we will be beating down the doors of Verizon, AT&amp;T and Dish saying, we have towers. Come, come, come and, and, and lease. And hopefully, you know, at that point, we'll have form leases between Rise Up and the carriers. So there's not extended negotiations. All the terms are done. You know, they're used to us. We're used to them and we lease them up. Correct.
What is, how far the distance are you talking about putting the two next in the areas? How close are they? Will they be? And then also the, um, I guess the radiation of the distance on how far will it go out from what township to what township? Well, everybody that needs it, that don't have the service, well, that picks it up for the two, the distance.
There's two towers proposed, one at Vanna Field and one at the fire station right next door to this building. And there's, we're going to show you a picture now of what the coverage looks like before and what it looks like after.
Okay.
But go to the.
So go to the before, yeah.
Go to the before.
So that's the.
All the white and the gray is essentially dead.
Yep. And then the after. And that's what it covers. It doesn't go to another township. It, it stays here local, you know, and covers those two areas. And they're about 9,000 feet apart. Andy just told me.
And can you say the distance from the towers to the next home? I guess start with Penland.
Yeah, he said about a thousand feet.
It's a thousand feet.
At the park.
At the park.
Here, there obviously have residences that are closer to the township building.
So in Penland, the tower will be at a thousand feet from the next home?
More or less.
And I think.
I know a few people in line have had their hands up for a really long time. Are you okay? I can't see who the first person.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is, uh, Phil Sproll and I represent, uh, SBA Communications that owns a, uh, two towers within the township currently. And this really is a question for the, the township, uh, board. What due diligence or bidding process or valuation has been undertaken to choose Rise Up versus? What due diligence or bidding process or valuation has been undertaken to choose Rise Up versus other tower companies that offer similar services?
We've been begging Rise Up, Ken. You all wanna make a proposal?
I think we kind of.
So when you.
Over a year ago, we had a significant amount of constituents come forward and and express to us their concern with health and safety as it related to the lack of cell phone service. We kind of offered it up to anyone and everyone who had the ability to, to provide any kind of service as it relates to coverage in, in our dead zones. And we had a couple of people come forward. One person was willing to do mapping.
Yeah.
We had somebody come forward, and I forget what their proposal was. I'm not sure what that proposal was.
No, no, the, the, the companies that have come before us and made proposals, we never heard from them again.
Okay, fair enough. Like I said, it was just a question.
Listen, if you, if you know somebody, that'd be great. Competition's always good, but nobody's ever been interested in Lower Gwinnett.
And we had a significant amount of individuals who, who are, there's health and safety concerns. They can't call nine-one-one.
All right, I think you answered my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next person. Ms. Jones.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Carol Jones. I also live in the Penland Village, and I have been following this issue for probably a year and a half right now since it became a big problem from a lot of the residents were bringing up the issue of the cell phone service. And I know safety is an issue. I too am concerned about the safety issues, but I really believe that those have been answered over the last year and a half as we've been listening to the process and how things are gonna be done. And I am very concerned about the cell service. I also work from home. I have two landlines in my house because I cannot get cell phone service. If I'm on the phone, the call is either dropped or I cannot hear. I don't get any reception in. So we are in need of some kind of whatever it might take, and it's probably a self, a cell tower in order to correct that problem because there are lots of people, they, they tell us that we're in a bowl, but I don't have T-Mobile service. I have one of the other carriers, which is probably even worse. And I'm glad that things are being done. I hope the township does move forward to resolve this problem for us residents. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Chong. I'm, I'm off of Tanglewood, and I'm actually surprised. I didn't know there was such a cell phone issue because I haven't had one in this since I've lived here. But I, I guess I, which I'm thankful. Two questions. One is, what are some common complaints that arise during the installation or after a tower has been installed from different communities, townships that never, they never thought of?
They just sit there.
So that there's.
There's, there's.
Complaints whatsoever.
I, Scott has put up more towers. He forgot more about towers than I'll ever know. Why don't you, Scott, why don't you come up and do, do you have anything about that? I mean, any problems in the construction or after installation?
No, I'd say the biggest thing is construction probably takes, you know, sixty days. Just the noise from the construction. But after that, I think that's what you're asking. After the tower's up and operating, I've, haven't heard of any issues or concerns after that. They're very solid, and I don't think there's been any complaints I'm aware of.
Okay, and you've been doing this for many?
I'm in my twenty-six year of putting towers up.
Okay. And then are there any studies that you provide in regards to just any health? There's any impact on health whatsoever? I know you keep, you know, saying that you exceed the FCC guidelines. However, I think what's more important is had there, are there any studies that you can provide that show that there, that there are no dangers there and it is safe? Or hey, look, this is something you may want to look at?
I, I do have with me copies of the American Cancer Society's page regarding safety near these facilities. I'm happy to, to leave you a copy. Or, or you can go online and, and check it out yourself. This, the subject's been studied extensively since, really since World War Two, when radar became used by, by our country, surrounding countries. And it's been studied by government agencies. It's been studied by private sector. It's been studied by universities. The, the, the most extensive study that I've seen was called the Interphone Study. And it was in twenty twelve, I think, is, is when it concluded. And that study focused on heavy cellphone users because that's really where exposure levels over time are greatest. When we talk about a tower that's one hundred fifty feet in the air and a thousand feet away from where you live, or whatever the case is, exposure levels are minimal. I mean, to the, to the level where they're undetectable compared to what's in the environment already in a building like this with with fluorescent lighting and, and all the other electronic equipment in here. If we built this tower on the property adjacent to this and, and went in here and tried to measure the contribution from, from the tower, we'd have a hard time finding it. And I've, I've done that, so I can tell you that. So that study focused on brain tumors and folks who were heavy cellphone user. And even when they were focusing on that narrow group of people, there, there were no calls, there, there was no causal relationship found between any any, any more brain tumors. And they look for lots of different kinds of brain tumors. And, and the study, it's been a while since I read it. But it's called the Interphone Study, and that's the most extensive study that, that I, that, that I've read on, on the subject.
Hey, just quickly, that, you said that was in two thousand and twelve?
I think it concluded, it, it was maybe a decade-long study, studied thousands of heavy cellphone users. And I think it concluded then.
And I know, I have no background in this, so I, is there any difference between what was going on back then and what's going on today for like the, the five G and the new technology? I don't know if it's different or if it's not.
I get that question a lot, and, and five G has gotten some bad press. Four G got some bad press when it came out. The, the technology is really what happens on the end of the radio frequency channel. So electromagnetic waves have been electromagnetic waves since, you know, the dawn of time. And, and we've figured out how to harness them and communicate with them. And what happens on the, on the ends of those wave, you know, we, we can encode information on them and decode it on the other end. And we found more sophisticated techniques over the years, vastly more sophisticated techniques. And now we use a wider channel and we do a whole lot of really fancy things at really breakneck speeds in order to provide your, your YouTube TV and your, and, and your streaming services and your FaceTime. But what hasn't, what hasn't changed is the physics and how electromagnetic energy interacts with the human body. So the studies that, that were done in twenty twelve, in nineteen ninety-six, in nineteen eighty-five, these are all still valid studies and, and are still relied upon. Sure.
My name's Ken Amy. I live at eleven twenty-two Old Bethland Pike, which is virtually right across the street from the township building. And I just had a number.
Hey, Ken.
I'm Mike.
How are you? Good to see you.
I have, I have a, a number of, of questions and comments, but I'm gonna try and limit myself to, to three principal things. One is, I don't know if Jamie, if it's possible for you to put the the Photoshop rendering from Old Bethland Pike back up on the board. That one is Penland Pike, let's see. One more, there you go.
Yep.
This shot is taken virtually from my driveway. And I think we can all see that the cell tower is a bit obtrusive from my residential driveway of my two-hundred-year-old house that we have struggled to keep historically correct and maintain the character that it deserves and the township deserves. So I think that one of your comments, Mike, initially was that the site down at the old gas station was a dog. And I think to anyone who lives on Old Bethland Pike near my home, this site is a dog. That's one. Second is, from what I'm gathering, what you've done is you've selected the best sites of what the township owns, which is not necessarily the best sites out there.
Okay, go on, go on.
Were you able to develop the RF studies and the search rings that would be necessary for all the carriers? There might be a better site than this one. I, I, I don't think you'd argue that.
I, I don't know, you know? So no, I could, I can't stand here and argue with you. Absolutely don't know.
And I think it's just the nature of Rise Up's business plan is that you work with municipalities with municipally-owned property. But I think that if the net were spread wider and there were more properties available, or if the township had other properties that perhaps could fill the same gap, there is on the opposite side of Bethland Pike, there is industrially-zoned land which perhaps would be more suitable for a tower and less visible from residential properties. So that, that's my, that's my second point. And then the third point that I had.
Talking about the Ice House?
Pardon?
Talking about the Ice House. You said the other side of Bethland Pike. We're just trying to orient ourselves.
At the end of Moore Drive, back where the old Moore Products property, Siemens property and such. And the, the, the benefit from that area is that the elevation is higher, so.
No, we don't own it.
No. Again, again, I'm just, I'm trying to point out the limitations of having to, you know, forcing this into township property. And then the, the, the third, the third thing that I just want to mention to the, to the board, and I'm sure, I'm sure that your solicitor will will agree or disagree with me. But the one thing that I'm a little concerned about is Mike's suggestion that you simply waive zoning and, and make the township exempt so that the process can be done more quickly. And I, I, I would have implicit trust in this particular board, but I can't say the same about the board that's gonna be occupying these seats in ten years. And I would, I would really not like to see the township give away its zoning responsibility to allow one project to go through. I think that if, if this really is a good project, it can proceed through the same, the same pattern, the same course, the same, the same procedures that any other project would go through. So I have.
Thank you.
As our former zoning officer, we appreciate that input. It's great.
Thanks, Ken.
Hi, Matt Kylie. I live at eight forty-nine Foxfield Road. I'm actually somebody who's gone through the three carriers in span of like six months trying to find a carrier that wouldn't drop calls at the Five Points intersection here. They're all bad. And it's not easy to switch carriers that frequently. Anyway, if you could, can you put up the coverage map? Is, my question is, is there anything we can do with the existing towers? I'm all for the new towers, frankly, so I'm a thumbs up. But if you look at it, the original map, it happens to be my neighborhood, but there's a cone, so I think there are cell towers on top of the water tower by the, the middle school and the high school.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about them at the beginning. I think that the point is that the carriers are maxed out on those towers, but I have to defer to Andy.
There's like, so basically it goes out radially, right, from that tower. And why is there a whole coverage area which includes my neighborhood and frankly includes this area right here? Why is that missing? It looks like, I don't know, a thirty-degree arc.
Is that one over there? Is that, is that the middle school?
Yeah, so if you look at the tower, it's basically on top of the, like I said, the water tower by the middle school. Right? And it's covering its area really well, except for, I don't know what that is.
Well, so I'd say keep in mind, and I don't want to steal your thunder, right, but this is the T-Mobile now. So maybe T-Mobile's not on the middle school. I, I don't know this, but.
I mean, it just looks like there, you could put antennas right up there facing in that direction, and we'd all of a sudden have coverage even to here. Because we're pulling off of the three oh nine tower off Old York Road right now. And that's even further away. I just, I just don't understand why they're not covered, covering, covering, covering the whole area in the circle there.
Yeah, so I do see what you're, what you're talking about. So T-Mobile is on that, that water tower there. That, that could just be that, that the way they have their antenna oriented. It, it's tough to say exactly what, what, without actually having access to their propagation model, which I don't. I can't say exactly what's going on there, and maybe just the way they have their antennas oriented. But it does, it does look odd to me as well. And that's, that's a question I can bring back to T-Mobile and just ask them, hey, what's going on?
I can tell you eighteen teams are doing the same thing.
Well, yeah, and.
Who owns that tower? Who owns the rights to that tower? Is it the water company or?
I, I don't know that. The, the answer to that question.
The water company. And so they lease it out and make the money, right? Okay.
I can tell you this, though, that, that the providers, all of the providers seek to leverage their existing assets before they go and look to build new towers because it's expensive, it's time-consuming. If they can add equipment to an existing site and fix an issue, they'll do that first.
Just saying, it's, it's an obvious coverage gap, right? You've got, you know, of three hundred and sixty degrees there, you're missing like forty degrees. And I just don't get why that is and why we couldn't work with the existing. Do we lease out the water tower to the, to a, a water company or who owns that, right?
The water company owns. Owns it.
Okay.
It would be helpful if we can get an answer to that.
Sure.
Yeah, my, my other, my other thought too is, I mean, if, what, what does the carrier get out of this besides people not switching carriers because their service is so bad? I mean, they pay you guys, right? And then.
They pay us, we pay you part of it.
So what do they get out of it besides customer satisfaction?
Coverage.
Right, so, so.
Coverage and, and capacity, and capacity.
To your point, if there was a way to sort of leverage existing towers.
Yeah, they don't want to pay us rent. Right? They don't want to pay rent on a new tower if they can just deploy on an existing structure. Part of the, it's a part of the problem with the area. I don't know if Andy touched on it or not. There's not a lot of tall things around there. Not a ton of them that aren't, you know, obviously already occupied with antennas.
Yeah, you know, I have the same question about the tower on Route two oh two. It looks like it's artificially truncated around that tower. I live close, I live almost under that tower. And I, I just don't understand how your software is determining the the coverage of these maps.
Well, it's, it's, we, just again, it's T-Mobile's maps. We have to go to them for, for these propagation maps. Andy analyzes them and things like that, but we'll go back.
Generate the map.
These are T-Mobile maps that Andy has, you know, added stuff in, and he's the expert, but we'll go, we'll go back.
Are you paying T-Mobile to give you the maps?
No, we don't pay T-Mobile.
They just give out maps for free.
They give maps out to people who want to construct towers for them and solve a, a great need for them. They cooperate. I mean, they, they've already agreed to be the anchor tenant on the towers. So we'll go back to them and ask them for explanations on the two oh two tower and, and frankly, on the weird V, you know? On the, on the water tank tower and try to get some explanation of why. I agree. I mean, that coverage looks pretty weak, right? And then the, the V, the V looks, looks unusual too. And we'll go back and ask them, hey, what's up? You know, and get you a specific answer.
Okay, I, so I, I appreciate that answer. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's an independent source of information for these maps, but it, it sounds like if they're from T-Mobile, they're gonna give you what they have.
The coverage is gonna change slightly depending on the carrier too. I mean, it's proprietary kind of information for them. It's been hard enough to get it out of them, you know, get, it's, it's difficult to get information out of them like this because it's strategic.
Well, I can imagine. That's why I'm surprised they were just giving it away.
I think that was, they did independent surveys of cell phone coverage in the air. And I, I don't, they, they confirmed what we all know is when you drive down Penland Pike, right before you get to Bethland Pike. I, I don't remember specifically if it still has, but, but that's an independent company that did that.
Yeah. Right, yeah. It would be interesting to know if the coverage can be. It would be interesting to know if the coverage can be rectified with the existing towers before we put in new towers. But, you know, I'm all for people having cell phone coverage. I know how difficult it is when you're in the middle of a business call and your line drops, so. But it, it might behoove us to see if there are alternative approaches or maybe additional coverage that could be gained from the current towns.
Well, we can certainly ask.
My name is Valley Meeks. I live on Truellen Avenue and I would just like to say that the last half of this discussion has really brought up some very important points. The gentleman here mentioned the zoning. And I, I must agree with him, you know, we don't know what it's going to be like, who's going to be up there 10 years from now. So giving up things now just so you can get some towers. And also looking at, hey, that is a strange looking V there. What about looking at what we do have? And if we can use that. I'm also having a concern about what if, you know, I, I understand people want their, their phones. And the, I, a person that just mentioned that she could not make an emergency call. I understand that, but I think we should not just jump to it. There are a lot of thinking that should go on. I hope that this is just, you know, the beginning of some thoughts here. Because I am all for, you know, more cell coverage, but I'm also concerned about, what about down the road? If we find out, hey, what's happening bad down the road was a result that could have been resolved here. Will they, you come back and fix it? Okay, that's another issue that I'm, I'm a little concerned about.
The one thing I'd just say real quickly to Ken's point and your point, and with all due respect to the board, and I really mean that, 10 years from now, if a board wants to do something, they're not going to talk about this board. They're going to do it. Because that's what elected officials can do, right? So there's no sense in being bound by future boards or anything like that. A future board could get elected next year, I'm not sure your election, you know, and decide something completely different than this board did without any consequence. So, you know, I don't want you to think that we're deciding now for 10 years from now. We're deciding now about coverage in the township, you know, today really, and into the, you know, 25 years into the future. And whether we're going to fill those gaps, it's really not a matter of setting a course for the future of the township, which the township elected officials can do anytime.
Just to be clear, this is just a presentation. So we wanted to hear your feedback. We wanted to hear how people feel about it. We want you to express your concerns and try to get answers and try to get more information. No decision has been made at all. We're, we're looking to get and hear your feedback and hope that you continue to share your feedback.
And, and I also want to stress that it's not, while we're very early in the process, it's not as though this hasn't been an issue for this board for, at least since prior to Rise Up's first presentation, a, a year and a half ago, we've been. Yeah, maybe longer before I was on the board. I know that this has been discussed. And, and there's been a variety of options thrown and presented to the board. And sort of this was something that we wanted the public to weigh in on now. But we are still very early in the process, but it's not, it's not as though Rise Up just came to us with an idea. And we thought, oh, that's great. Let's, let's move forward. That's not, that's not where we are.
Two things. It does set a precedent if they do something that is different than how it's structured for the process to go forward. And I'm not suggesting you're going to do that, but I think that was the point that was being made. So to follow up on Mr. Amy's comment about possibly a property behind the shopping center that would have higher elevation, while I realize it's not owned by the township, do you only work with municipalities or what would be the process to, I believe that's owned by Gwinnett Mercy now?
No, it's actually owned by Beacon Properties.
Okay, so there's somebody else. Do you have a process for looking at another site and dealing with a private entity to see if that? Because it's a beautiful drive coming down the road. You see the township building and you drive into Lower Gwinnett and now we're going to be looking at something that's like a 15 story building potentially there, which I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not saying to not put service in, but he has the right to not look out of his house and potentially and see that if there's another place that might accomplish the same end and provide you the coverage and maintain the historic.
Can I just, can I, can I say just one thing? There's nowhere in this township that we can put a tower where it's not going to affect somebody's view. There's nobody. If we put it back at the Siemens site, what is it? Truellen, Truellen right above, they're, they're going to see it. There, there's no, there's, th- there's not an option, at least that I'm aware of, where somebody isn't going to have to deal with some change. There's just not an option. That, that's just, we don't have that. If we had it, that's one we would take. But we don't have that. So we're stuck with what we have.
So the issue is we have to try to address where the lack of coverage is as well as properties owned by Lower Gwinnett. And so we gave, we threw out a list of all of the properties and this was at a previous board meeting, I don't know, three or four months ago? We shared all the properties that we own and said, find, so that we can address the gaps along Norristown Road in Summiedown Pike and, and Penland Pike and the Village of Penland. And understanding that they're not necessarily near each other, they're, they're huge areas of, well, I feel like they're huge areas of lack of coverage. And, and they needed to both be addressed. So we gave all of the properties and said, try to address it as best as you can and, and come back to us.
I think we, we have someone on Zoom who hasn't asked a question yet, so we just.
Yeah, my name's Paul Bullion. I live on Vestra Road. I'll mention right up front, I don't have a big opinion one way or the other, whether you put up the towers or not. But I wanted to make one comment and ask a question. I live in a stuccle home and that acts as a Faraday cage, which is, doesn't allow the cell signals to come in very well. But my carrier allows me to connect to my Wi-Fi network and when I'm in my home, my calls go over the Wi-Fi as opposed to the cell network. So that's my comment, just maybe help some people. My question is, some people brought up the idea of the cell phone being important for emergency situations, maybe when we lose power and all that kind of stuff. So I'd like to ask them, how are they going to, or how do they make their towers robust? In the case, because they need power in the case when the power goes down. And also they need connectivity back to the central stations to get their signals back there. How do they also, you know, make that robust? Because if they go over telephone lines, et cetera, tree goes down, breaks the lines, there's no cell services, the way I'm looking at it.
I'll let Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll let Scott answer it, but I believe the simple answer is there's backup generators on the, on the towers and they handle all the backup if the power goes out. The second question.
Just understand the question is, what do they do in outages from storms, power outages?
Not only power outages, not only power outages, I could answer that one. I would assume, hopefully you're putting generators in, but I wanted to hear you say that, you know, backup power. But it's also the cell signals, even if you have power, the signals have to go back to the central stations to connect to other people. That's done either over wires, fiber, or, you know, some other radio frequencies. So how do you handle that situation?
Well, it's a good point, but, so when it comes to the power, a lot of the carriers, and I can't speak on the carriers doing this, but they typically are putting in backup generators. So power hasn't been an issue. And if they don't have a generator permanently on site, they will roll one in on wheels to cover during the outage. When it comes to the fiber backhaul, the fiber optics that come out to the tower are, you know, running on the utility poles, there is that risk of it getting knocked out and getting restored. So that can happen. That's a good point.
Yeah.
Along those lines, what happens if a lightning strikes the power? I guess they're grounded, right?
They're grounded, yeah. It just goes into the ground.
There's a lot of money spent in putting grounding around the towers and the equipment. That's a big part of the project.
What's a Faraday? They're all doing this right now. How do you spell Faraday?
Is somebody on mute?
Are they not on mute or?
Any other questions?
Can someone put up the slide again with the coverage that T-Mobile currently provides? Specifically the question of that 80 degrees that's not covered? And we were talking about perhaps T-Mobile can increase that area and then things will be better. I want to make sure I understand the light green colors indicate where we can get, make a cell phone call from our car, right? So I don't think we should get all excited about filling in that little area so that we can make phone calls in more areas with our cars. We need to make calls from our homes. Am I correct in that understanding?
Is that a question? I mean, yes, 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 definitely. You're correct. The statement is correct, yes.
Is my understanding correct?
It's, I mean, I think that we, I think with respect to the comments, I mean, I think we do have to, they look unusual. Like, let's, let's take a look, right? But it's still not going to reach, you know, where you want it to, you know, it's not going to, the, I, I believe even if you optimized all this, you still wouldn't fill the holes. I mean, were they, again, they are incentivized to fill these holes, right? It's in their best, and this is their whole purpose. Why they're spending money to deploy antennas anywhere is to serve you better. So if they could have served you better, chances are, I mean, they have people, professionals like Andy and, you know, and Scott up here that, to make sure they're installed properly to do that, but yes.
But the light green color is nothing to be that excited about because it just means you've got a cellular connection in your car.
Dark green inside the building, light green out of the building in your car.
And the white areas, it's dead.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
And so the incentive for other companies like Verizon to jump on your tower is that I don't switch to T-Mobile.
That's correct. Exactly.
Yeah, and, okay.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly. That's it. Yeah, yeah.
I think we have a question here.
Good evening. AJ Tilson, 528 Gwinnett Avenue. Two comments and then one question. One, the one comment is during the hurricane, Idaho was a perfect example, mile and a half away. And we had no cell service. I had no way to see what was going on, no way to contact anybody or to be contacted. So I'm happy to hear that the township is trying to move forward on this. I work for a company in Philadelphia that were a five story building and we have multiple cell towers up on our building. And I can tell you that's, we love having a cell tower on our building and having the money come to us. So I'm happy to hear the township's looking for a way to bring the money to, back to us as a taxpayer and not to a private business. And I do agree that no matter where you put this, there's going to be people who are unhappy with the location. There's no way around that. My one question is regarding the lease, you said a 29 year lease with five year renewals. Who has the option of renewal or non-renewal? Is that on you guys or on the, is your, with the township or who, you know?
Yeah. Nick, do you remember? I should know this. I'm the lawyer. I haven't, didn't, should really know this. You know, we don't really, we don't really get there because nobody wants to terminate, right? They want the, like, when you start looking at that revenue stream after five years, you start to say, oh, I think I could keep this on for another, going for another 25, you know, 20, 20 years. So I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't, I don't remember, but, you know, we don't want anybody to terminate, so the incentive's, you know, not there and the carriers certainly, you know, they, they may terminate, but it's kind of, you know, then they lose coverage. And they're like, you know, once they, they can't wean themselves off coverage, you know, once they cover an area, it's crucial, it's critical, because any difference at that point is going to really make you, you know, angry, so.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know, like.
Nick, do you want to, Nick Pollan hasn't said anything. I feel bad. I've been chatting it up the whole time. Nick's from President and CEO of Rise Up.
I just want to say thank you to the board for looking at this issue for the last year or longer. I want to thank Mike and Scott and Andy. My mom's probably glad that they talked for me. Because I talk too often myself, but I just wanted to kind of hit a couple of points. When I started my first business about 15 years ago, it was because I've been in and out of government my whole life. And so working, worked for the governor and Dell, I've been in and just done a lot of things. So I felt the way to do this in a different paradigm was to work proactively with municipal governments. So they could actually control the process from the beginning. And they could also derive revenue and they could help with their emergency management needs. And we've got a tower we're building in Langhorne right now that's going to have Middletown Township's Public Works, Middletown Township's EMS, a volunteer ambulance. That's going to help. And that I'm proud of. And I think that's something that really should be encouraged. Because one of the other things that's happening, and I know you had another tower company person talk and, and you can vet us all you want. I can tell you, I've worked with more than two dozen municipalities. I'm working with more than that now. That's all we've done. That's all I've ever done. Yes, we do work with private companies. Sorry, or private landowners, but the first preference is always to work with the municipal body because it makes the most sense and allows you to have the control and derive everything I just said. I did want to point out just some random thoughts, if you don't mind. This does remind me, I had a very similar experience back in Middletown Township back in 2008 and 2009 where I talked with the board and they were trying to address, the iPhone came out in 2007. They were trying to address how they were going to respond. Geez, I have this in my hand. I can't put it down. That's how addicted I am to it. But I think what they did and they changed their ordinance, the ordinance was cumbersome and they did make it a by right use. Now, that board, at the time, that was a democratically controlled board. It immediately flipped as soon as they put up the first tower. And it was just a great process. And there was, because one of the things I had to do every time was I had to get a lease executed with the board. So there was always an op, in a public meeting, in a public vote, there was always the option for there to be someone to say yes or no. And ultimately, as the, the woman said here, I don't live here. I'm from York, Pennsylvania. So you have to make the best judgment for the citizen. I think it's wonderful everyone came out today. The same thing that happened back all those, almost 15 years ago. But I can tell you, those three towers I built, they're still there. They're still leasing up. Police and fire, it's been a really, really good result for them. And I think if you went and talked to the current Bucks County Commissioner who was in that area at the time, she would say the same thing. If T-Mobile, or if you're not happy with the coverage, the best way, as Mike said, it's all churn. What the carriers care about is churn. They care about people, now Andy won't say this, but I'll say it. They care about people leaving. They care about their subscribers. You have three really powerful carriers who are more or less have the same subscriber numbers. So if people start walking in this area, especially this particular township, beautiful township, that's going to make notice. So that's going to force a lot of carriers. So if T-Mobile jumps in and all of a sudden you start saying, wow, their coverage really improves? There may be a lot of Verizon customers jumping into T-Mobile. As an aside, I'm on SOS with T-Mobile here, so that is something that how that'll really get more carriers motivated to jump on these towers by people walking. Or sadly for the gentleman who tried three carriers already, you know, much to maybe no success. I, on that map, I, I don't know that carve out. I can imagine, maybe it's the way that antennas are placed on the, on the tank, which could be part of the issue. But regardless, because we not only have a coverage issue, we have capacity issues. We dominate these phones. Once again, I put it back in my hand. We are streaming, we are on it. I have a 14 year old kid. I don't think he's done anything within on TikTok for the last 364 days. So because of that, the constant trouble just to get a signal isn't just coverage related, it's capacity related. Now here, you happen to have massive coverage problems. So even if, so while we can address and we'll certainly make the inquiry. Now here on, you happen to have massive coverage problems. So even if, so while we can address and we'll certainly make the inquiries. Of can they augment somehow? Ultimately, it's not going to be enough for them because the carrier wouldn't have any desire to put up. They're going to spend quarter million, 300,000, 400,000 just on antenna arrays. And let alone the ongoing operating expense of paying rent. So if they could already have sorted their problem, they would have tried. And some of it is, you know, whether it's the difficulty of putting a tower or finding somewhere that would work. And by the way, even if that industrial place would work, I don't. Well, I'm not sure if it would. It could be that, depending, I don't know that exact location. It could be that for T-Mobile, it's just, it wouldn't work for them. It might not work for Verizon. Or you could have multiple towers all of a sudden needed. One of the things about trying to control the process is we don't want to, we don't want. Tower after tower, after tower, after tower. In any township, you want to try to put them in good strategic locations that kind of meet the needs of where the township is going. Not just for the here and now, but also for the future. And I think these will do that. I think the issue with the potential shorter tower could lead to more towers. Because of height issues, all of a sudden we'll be back, whoever the board is in three, four, five, 10 years, you could need more. And I don't think that's necessarily an ultimate end objective by any, certainly not ours. And, you know, I think the other real benefit is, um, and this is happening to the big tower companies. Is that the carriers are trying to reset rents. Because they've been on towers for a long, long time. And they are trying to hop off and, and, and get back, because maybe when they were 20 years ago paying 2,000, now they're paying 10,000. Well, the one thing by putting a tower. And this is me trying to think ahead. Yeah, I know I don't live here, but putting a tower through municipal building or on the park and any township owned property is that. It's going to be pretty hard for any carrier to ever want to leave the township because there's really going to be no other place for them to go. And that's the security by working with a municipality that I find. And it creates an enduring revenue stream that, as Mike said, will be here for years and years and years. And the one of the, I think the last of the three towers I built at Middletown Township was on a beautiful new fire building. Scott did that. And. You know, I hadn't seen it in a long time and I pulled up the Google map and, well, there were four antenna on it. I put that up in 2011, maybe? So if you build it, they really do come. I can't tell you when. But they will. And I, and lastly, I want to thank you again. I, I truly mean it. I really thank everyone for coming out. I thank people on Zoom. I think the fact that people can be on Zoom is indicative of why, I know people are probably on their wifi connections, but you could also be on a mobile phone. And I think the way things have moved so rapidly and they continue to move so rapidly is indicative. And I think the board should be truly applauded for opening up this, for doing the, obviously we did the mailing happily. Because you're addressing a need that you have, not only for the now, but also for the future. And, and I thank you for having the opportunity and giving my company the opportunity to hopefully work with you at some point in the future. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Got one question.
Again, Rob Middleburg from Two Richards Way. And it's not really a question, but you know, sort of a challenge to people. You know, I understand the sight blindness issue. Some of us will be affected more than others. It's just the nature of this. I know we'll see it from where we are. If, if it goes on, close to here. I know that. But I, I urge everyone, go home without pulling out a map. Take out a piece of paper and write down where the 10, without looking at this map, the 10 closest cell phone towers are to you. Write them down. Don't think, just go and write them down. And I, I dare say, if you write down two, you'll probably write down a lot because they become part of the background eventually. And we drive past cell phone towers every day, no matter where we're going. And I don't know about you, but I don't pay attention to them. They're just background. They're background noise. So I, I understand the sight blindness. I do. I, I, again, I was asked to look at a school that had one on it. So, but it became part of the background there too. And no one noticed it. No one spoke about it. So, you know, again, it's just a challenge and I, I dare say virtually no one here could write down probably more than one or two, if at all, if any at all.
Thank you. So, so one, one thing I just want to echo Danielle's comments. And Janine's. We're not at the beginning of the process, but we're not anywhere near the end of the process for the folks that are expecting coverage. Just, I, I want to make sure everyone's expectations are managed. And if we move, if, if we decide to go forward and put up towers, if that's what the board votes on. There is still a long road to get the towers up and then get your provider on the tower. Right? So if you don't have T-Mobile, you may be waiting a while. If the board decides to go forward with this, so. We're, we're mindful, but, but I just want the public to be mindful as well. There's things that we can't control. We can't control who's going to go on those towers. So I, I just, you know, yeah, hopefully they'll come. That, that is the hope, right? But I just want everyone to be mindful that we don't control that part of the process.
I think what I'm hoping for is.
The question was, what's the process on voting for this and moving forward with the board after tonight?
So there's a, there's a couple of steps in that process, but what I'm hoping is that everybody that was here, everyone that received the notice, take some time to digest the information. Maybe think about it and process it. If they have additional questions, send it to us as a board or additional comments to send it. And there's, I'm, I'm assuming it's July 11th. There's a host of people that are probably on vacation, not home. Make sure that your neighbors and friends, this is, this is recorded as well as being streamed. Make sure that you share it with others so that they get an opportunity to actually look at it and think about it and process it. So the next step would, would be for us to move forward. I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor to talk, to walk through all of the steps.
There are obviously a great many steps, uh, that are involved in this process. Right now, we're in a due diligence phase as well. We'll be looking at title issues, uh, environmental issues, zoning issues. Um, there are issues with regard to conservation easements that have to be addressed with regard to covenant that need to be addressed. So there's a variety of issues that have to be addressed before any tower gets constructed. And I'll say that, um, towers are not completely exempt from zoning requirements. Even in townships where township property is exempt from zoning requirements, there are still application requirements. There are plans that have to be submitted, reports that have to be submitted. So this is not totally free, respectfully, of government involvement in the process. But we understand what the concerns are relative to timing. And if the board decides to move forward, we'll deal with the legal issues and the zoning issues very, very quickly.
Our township manager would probably be the person that would be taking the lead. Mimi? Ms. Gleason, yes, yeah. But really, truly, really truly, we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to express their feelings, their concerns, to share them with us. To take a look at the presentation. Are we going to have the presentation on our website in any capacity? And the coverage zones on our website, share it with your neighbors. Make sure that people get an opportunity to see. Um, we're going to try to get the answers to the questions that you, that you posed. I don't know if we're going to be able to put the answers up on the website, but we'll be able to address them at least as directly as we possibly can. And a continued outreach to us to make sure that, you know, we make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard and that your voices are, are shared.
And, and look at that coverage map and make sure you actually are going to get coverage, I guess. It looks like our house, our neighborhood may be half and half, but, um, it looks like that's the best, maybe that's the best that can happen.
So as we move forward, if you're in, if you're in the area of where the towers will be, you'll get notices of, of things as they move forward. It'll be on our website and outside of the summer, so we have, we have a, a meeting a month in the summer, so June, July and August, it's at the end of the month. So we'll have another meeting in July. Um, but starting in September, we have two months, two meetings a month. Um, so you'll be updated. You'll have an opportunity to see it on our website, but if you ever have questions or concerns, you can just go to the website and, and outreach and we'll be happy to respond. Anyone have any additional questions? Then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. And I want to thank Rise Up, uh, for taking the time to come, come out and present this information and all of you for taking the time out of your Tuesday evening in July. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you. And Board, thank you.
Is there a second? All those in favor, uh, meeting adjourned.
Great, thank you.